January twenty twenty five. Special Board Leading of the Big Bear Regional Waste Water Agency. Director Segovia, please.
Please join me in honoring our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, in the name of the Lord.
So, is anything to do with any of this on here? But I wish I would have. This is on replenish.
Ready, go. Chair Eric, Director Russo, Director Segovia, Director Walsh, and Chair Miller.
Hi. I remember free public forum, public testimony for another open matter, list on public agenda, public comment online, and list on public agenda will be taken at. At the time, you called for discussion, state law, privacy, from taking that, but we are not listed on the public agenda. You know, a few people have asked about the agenda I have today, but the new business item has nothing to do with replenish bigger, I want to clarify that. So if you have a comment today, it is not about that, you need to do it in a public at this time.
Just repeat that one more time.
Okay.
I'll split.
Item five, new business discussion only. Today, we're talking about equivalent dwell dwelling unit calculation, a total panel annual charge methodology. There is no relationship between that and replenish bigger. If you have a comment about replenish bigger today, you would need to use under a public forum. That makes sense to those. So do you have any cards for public forum?
I have a letter to read.
Sure.
This is from a gentleman named Michael Meyer. Thank you for permitting me to comment on the Barla equivalent dwelling unit discussion. My name is Michael Meyer. I have considered Big Bear my second home for fifty years. You could say I've watched Big Bear grow and the number of weekend cabins that have turned to permanent residences grow. My background is in the private sector where we have had to bill for services rendered at a competitive rate. When we contemplated any rate changes, we first internally reviewed for any possible efficiency or cost cutting measures we could perform while still maintaining our customer quality. I'd like to first task the board with asking why we are doing this? If any changes would result in possible rate decreases to maintain the budget? Or if the only changes contemplated will result in a budget surplus and wherein the budget a surplus would go? I think the public deserves to know this. The second point I'd like to discuss is the desire to be equitable to ratepayers. I think we can all drive around Big Bear and see what should be one E D U may actually be several E D Us due to complex living situations. There are also a number of places that look like several proposed E D Us because of square footage, but are actually less than one E D U because it is a part time residence. This is an important distinction to make when we're talking of ratepayer equality. The premise behind the discussion is trying to determine the amount of sewer created by dwelling to create equitable billing practices. All of the proposed methodologies have benefits and drawbacks. I think it would be technically and financially difficult to meter effluent discharge from each individual residence, but would be the most equitable if possible. Ongoing maintenance of meters may also be an issue. The incoming water meter measurement is arguably the easiest, but one would likely have to make seasonal corrections for more than de minimis landscaping as irrigation does not create sewer effluent. One could also make calculations based on the amount of landscape you are to correct other irrigation, for example, square foot landscaped with an estimated water budget. The square footage or fixture count methodologies that would like that would like create multiple E D Us from a single family residence could create a large margin of error and inequity for sewer effluent calculations unless measures were taken into account for part time and vacant periods. A large house is not always permanently lived in at bedroom capacity or houses more than one family unit. A possible solution for this proposed methodology is for the affected ratepayer to file an affidavit on usage or vacancy. If only square footage or fixture count is utilized, this approach could look a lot like an additional tax based on property value, which is tied to square footage, not a supplemental use fee. Essentially, what Barla is trying to determine for the sake of ratepayer equity in this discussion is whether the property is being used by more than a single family unit or alternatively bed nights. How many people, how many nights in the month? From the number of bed nights, water use and effluent creation could be closely estimated. In my opinion, this information would also be helpful across member agencies for a number of reasons. The majority of this info could be gleaned from S T R info, county permits, and visual inspection, perhaps cross reference with other data sources. Thank you. You have comment cards?
Yeah. Can you do that a little slower? I don't know what to say right now, whatever it doesn't mean, I just want to say this. A recent study document, the presence of vast quantities of water speak a lot far beneath the earth surfaces here. The study confirms that there is a very, very large amount of water that's trapped in a really distinct layer of the earth of the earth. Anyway, there is a water monopoly in California. There is not a California drought period. We know that it has been orchestrated because of the control of the water supply. We know that it's all about controlling infrastructure and the air boiling. The resident family, they own the water and sell it back to us for outrageous amount of water. Some from flush faucet, more places look to turn sewage into tap water. They burn the book that writes about all this water. And it's about the unlimited supply in the world that we have water. Period. Gabson knew something. Redirected ninety percent of our water into the smell fish. All water has been turned off to Southern California. No water in our fire hydrants. Fire insurance was stopped three months before the Malibu Pacific fires. We have smart meters installed in the California houses. They are powered by lithium batteries and burnt hot and cannot be put out. Smart meters are a total control. Push a button and boom, your house is dust. It is not. It's not a coincidence that California is burning down. Please read the Act of eighteen seventy one, the year we turned the corporation administrated law written by the corporation for the corporation. We have been indoctrinated, all of us have been indoctrinated for the past hundred and fifty three years to think that this is our law. It is not our law. The Act of eighteen seventy one was passed with no constitutional authority and remains illegal to this day. Our what we are operating under is still illegal. The Constitution of the United States of America is the law for we, the sovereign people. All of our governmental employees are sworn to and oath to serve us and we, the people, and not the corporation of America, which is what we always are working under. We today are changing, today, I believe it's already done, are changing from a corporation run government to a republic run government for the first time since Ulysses S. Grant. That's the longest span we've been forced to be underneath a corporate law. We would like to see, oh, this is one thing. We would like to see the transparent accounting of all the money spent by Barla over the last ten years, so we can know where the money goes and how come we all of a sudden own that $1,000. We're going to be free again. Thank you, President Trump. Make America great again. We pay one hundred percent of our federal government's revenue. We pay for the I R S, F B I, C I A, E D S, Barla, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. The money of which most of all countries like Russia, Libya, London, and every place overseas that we pay. Our national debt today is approximately thirty seven trillion dollars. I do not know how many foreign entities are getting a piece of the United States, but it's not us. Barla is a total scam and you know Barla is a total scam. It's a total scam over the entire United States about replenished water. We don't need to replenish the water. We just need to drill down and get the water that we have already. Period.
Daniel.
Good to see you all. After the fire department, we had a nice silent prayer, a little bit of an offering of a prayer. I'm gonna start praying for our city. What's the fire department doing? You guys are spending all kinds of money. We need our forests taken care of. Period. I don't want my house to burn and I don't want to be barbecued. I don't want to see anybody else barbecued. I have my trailer and truck filled with gas, ready to go. But what kind of man would I be just running off and leaving maybe some of my neighbors, even though I only have five old people in my neighborhood? I might need help, maybe a cat. Rather than dropping off a kid's house. So all I see is the lack of nothing. I don't see any concern about the fire. We've had it in Hawaii. We've had it in Paradise and now all over L A. Like the fire captain said, we get a seventy mile an hour wind up here and some idiot, we're gone. Just like I said at the fire meeting, bend over, put your head between your legs and kiss your ass goodbye. I'm gonna die. So this is just to be another fleecing of getting money. You know what they call equity? Oh, well, you know, they have more toilets for the motels. Well, those motels pay a lot of money in taxes. They don't get away for free. They're paying many things that need to be added up. And why now? Because you want more money? They're trying to fleece the taxpayers. And that's all it is. You want to raise for this amount just for another tax? Tax after tax after tax. When's it gonna end? People are hurting. Thank God we just got rid of Ken ever Joe with his inflation. You know, people cannot afford things. It's expensive, even at the market. So what, just gonna tax people to death? When's it gonna stop? How about a little sabbatical? How about worrying about our city? What good is it gonna do if the damn city burns down? I mean, what's acceptable? Just because we have a lake here? Luck is not a good policy. Luck of not having wind is not a good policy. Buying million dollars worth of trucks is not a good policy if they just end up getting washed every day and nobody's working in the floors. How about trying a volunteer program? So I hear there's gonna be a city meeting later this week or next week about water. So we have to have a special city meeting. So I kind of wonder what kind of trickery is gonna happen there? Makes me wonder. With you two with the triad and your dirty tricks, are you gonna try to take this woman out like you did motor? That's what you boys are doing. The three of you, the triad. Just unbelievable what you guys tried to do. And you say you weren't trying to get rid of her? That's a lie. Not only a lie, a damn lie. It's obvious. What, you've been on the council for eighteen years? Mayor six times and now all of a sudden, oh, oh, God, then we gotta change this law like you did with Alan Lee. Let's change the voting rules. Let's get more women out of there. Let's try to get the black people out of there. That's all I see. Let's just keep raising taxes. When's it gonna end? You need to think about it. You're putting people out of business. Things don't last forever. Hopefully now with Trump in there, maybe some things will go right. But this is what I say. So thank you.
Daniel.
You said that I can't make any comments unless it's related to water. Is that right?
Usually it's about the discussion of equivalent dwelling calculations is what I was talking about.
I'm just advising people that they have a fairly long presentation to go through. You're more about, you know, binary life, but it's not about replenish bigger today. And so if you want to speak further, you can, if you want to speak down.
All right. I just wanted to say that well over a decade ago, the white hats, the good people in the military took over Sledge and Hammer. Sledge and Hammer is basically a device that monitors every public official. And in conjunction with that, they created the Q F S system, which I lectured about all this stuff, which you guys have never heard. And in combination with the quantum financial system, they've been monitoring every dollar that's been going to every city. And everything that everybody's doing, the A I technology has the ability to track every serial number of every dollar, both physical and digital. So I hope that you guys are watching what you're doing. And by the way, racing emails isn't gonna help. Sledge and Hammer records everything, keeps everything forever. And it even monitors every symbol, every symbolism created. And I know we have one congressman locally that has the eye of Horus as his corporate logo. I'm sure that was easily registered because symbolism will break down everybody. So if you guys think that you guys want to do anything or you guys have done anything, there's no hope for you. Okay, because every digital dollar has been tracked. It's still being tracked. It's gonna be tracked for the next hundred years. So I've been sitting back for the last decade plus watching all this, knowing that all this has been taking place in our federal government through our military, our special generals that set this up under direction of President John Kennedy. And so all this has been installed without anybody knowing their face. And I think you guys need to watch what you're doing. Tom's exactly right. There's more primary water on the planet than there is ocean water. So everyone needs to start paying attention to what's really going on. Cell towers, electric cars, all of that are nothing more than basically biological weapon in the making. They're radiating your bodies, radiating our air. That's just what's being done. Evil side have their plan, the good people had our plan. And we are now the Republic of the United States. And everything will be voted on by the people. And if you don't understand what's really going on, read the Constitution pre eighteen seventy one, and you'll see that they altered it between the eighteen sixty nine and nineteen eighteen seventy one. So everything reverts back to the power to the people, like I've said to the city council and the planning commission. You know, you don't own anything, people own everything. So all the corporations in the country, almost every one of them was caught. That's why Trump says we caught you all. And that's the big Q, because Q is the letter seventeen. And if you're following anything that they're doing, everything that has the letter seventeen written in any kind of context means that the military has control over it. So if you think you got away with something, you did. Going out to every public official, because they're watching everything. They've watched the school board, watched the city council, they've watched the COVID directives, the mask mandates. The reason there was a mandate was because it wasn't a law. And therefore, since you initiated code enforcement to crack down on cities, city, sorry, city businesses and us, the people, we broke several laws. Civil liberties law and the HIP laws. You broke the N R V code, section six, article one, and article three. So just warning you. They're coming into town, coming into every town. It's fine what you want, but you think I'm bullshitting you, you don't know who I've actually consulted with. Thank you.
Want to tell you?
Go to all the comments.
All the cards, all right. Let's be a bunch of C I A. Please. I'm recording. Yep. Oh, well, thank you, everyone, for coming to the meeting. And this meeting is about equivalent dwelling units and the calculations and methodology that we use to charge our member agencies. Okay, so currently, I'm sure the board is aware, but just to remind everybody, in our operating agreement, one E D U is a single family residential home. And equivalent dwelling unit is basically the flow that comes from the sewer and the blue loading and the wastewater from a single family dwelling unit. Commercial properties have multiple E D Us. And then all of those, all of our member agencies report to us the number of E D Us and to Barla and report that on an annual basis to us. Currently, we have about twenty five thousand six hundred and twenty seven point four zero E D U. Each one is actually broken down up on in the presentation for the number of E D Us per agency that make up Barla. But overall, the city is about forty six percent of the number of E D Us in our system. C S D is about almost forty nine percent of the number of E D Us. And fifty three B is about four point nine five. And that's just based on those number of E D Us. Again, single family residential and then any kind of commercial business, whether it's restaurants or any kind of commercial business, which is, we'll just keep that, most of the restaurant stuff is, it will be a multiple of E D Us. We have included in your staff report some alternative E D U calculation methods that the board can consider in the future. And this is basically comes down to sewer meters on each individual house or commercial unit. We could do the waste, the water consumption base fee. So that's basically the base off of the water usage by each facility. It could be based off of the square footage. It could be based off of picture count, capacity based method, or flow quality and quantity. Just to kind of give you an idea of what the sewer meter method would be, that that would install sewer meters at each individual property. And then, again, this would have to be done by the member agencies, just so that everybody's clear, member agencies would go in and install sewer meters to each individual home or property. And then the bill could be based on the actual sewer usage at that house or commercial property. There may be some discrepancy, obviously, with the actual sewer usage. And a lot has to do with the fact that the flow meters, there can be some inaccuracies at times for low flow like what you would see at a single family residential home. And then also we have some issues with I N I that would not be accounted for in this calculation. Sorry if it's not loud enough, but I just don't have the ring. Consumption based fee, it would be basically based off of a water meter. So C S D has water meters, D W P has water meters, and basically you can calculate your usage off of those water meters. There may be some difficulties too, because about third of C S D's customers, thirty, that feed into the sewer system actually receive their water from D W P. So there could be some coordination issues that the agency would have to do to make those numbers come out. Again, that also wouldn't account for I N I, which is another issue that we received a lot of I N I from the member agencies. And that wouldn't account for that in this calculation. Square footage is another method that the agencies could decide to use. They could do square footage of the property and they could come up with a methodology based on the number of E D Us per square footage. They could paint a system wide survey. Again, this would be done by the member agencies. And it may not accurately, it may not actually accurately reflect the amount of sewer that comes from that home. Just to give you an idea. Fixer count is another method. This is, you know, basically comes from the plumbing code. And the plumbing code assigns a value for a bathroom, a shower, and you can calculate how many fixture counts. Again, that will give you a value and then you could divide that out to put in dwellings. And again, this would take a system wide survey and it also may not actually reflect the actual sewer usage. So the capacity based method is basically, it basically comes down to number of bathrooms or potential occupancy in the residence. So you could calculate how many bathrooms and then that would give you an idea of what the potential bathrooms and kitchens and that kind of stuff. That would give you the idea of what potential sewer usage would come out of that house or commercial building. Or the number of occupancies in the house that you can use that. This would involve a formula considering the number of fixtures, rooms, or estimated usage. It requires a detailed property information and can be challenging to update as those properties change hands. Well, quantity and quality, quality and quality. So basically, this comes down to the flow and then the amount of E O B that the, that the commercial or residential home produces. There's a lot of different problems with this kind of a concept, but again, it's one of the ones that's out there. Individual meters at each of the connections would have to be installed and then testing of each of the sewer strength coming from those residents would possibly have to be done. It's a difficult method to calculate and implement. There may be some discrepancy with the accuracy of sewer usage at the properties built by member agency and the flow meter used by Barla to build the member agencies. And then, of course, it doesn't account for I N I. So the total annual charges method. This is includes a fixture rate and a variable rate. That's what we're thinking. Right now, our fixed portion is somewhere between seventy four to seventy eight percent of the actual charge. And then you take that and you multiply that percentage by the operating cost for the fixed cost of the calculation. So basically, you take our overall operating costs, you multiply So basically, you take our overall operating costs, you multiply that by the the. The there's about twenty-six different items and they're listed out in this in the stat report. And you multiply it by those two out and that gives you the actual fixed costs. And the variable cost is basically that flow rate that comes into the agency. That's the other twenty-six to twenty-four percent, that's what we currently do. And if you're fifty-two percent, if the three-year average is fifty-two percent of the flow. Then you're going to pay fifty-two percent of that variable portion of the cost. Like I said, it varies between twenty-four and twenty-six percent. That's what we currently do and this is the annual charges, if you can see on the on the the table. This is the annual charges, so the city currently pays about forty, but a little over forty-seven percent of the bill. CSD pays almost forty-eight percent of the bill and CSD pays over seven percent of the bill. So there's an alternative to this method, we could go to a straight. Low base. Basically, excuse me, a straight method of calculating a seventy thirty split. So instead of having it based off like the variable flow, it could be just seventy percent fixed. And thirty percent based on that, the percent of flow that you put into the system. That would change the rates a little bit, but again, it's just a different method, there would be. No flow variable, it would be just the thirty percent fixed on, I mean. We're different at the list, I'm sorry, of the fixed and variable costs, it would be just straight based on the amount needed to operate the entire system. So we went to the flow-based method. A flow-based method is basically a three-year flow average. And these reflect, these numbers on your screen reflect the amount of flow on a three-year basis that the city. Puts in CSD and CSA three fifty fifty-three B. The city puts in about fifty-two percent, fifty-two point four percent of the flow. On an annual basis, and that's again a three-year average. CSD is about forty-four percent. And then TSA fifty-three B is three point five two percent of the actual flow. Going into the system. And just to kind of remind you right now. This is actually how the bills are generated right now, so. City was fifty-two percent, they're actually paying only forty-seven percent of the bill. CSD is forty-four percent and CSD is paying about almost forty-eight percent of the bill. And fifty-three B is paying forty-four point seven percent of the bill. And they're three point five percent of the actual flow coming to the system. So we took those flow-based calculations and applied it to our annual requirement. You can see that there will be a significant difference for the city. The increase, it was just based on fifty-two percent of the flow. Increase that would increase the city's bill to increase of the bill four hundred and forty-seven thousand eight hundred and twelve dollars. Will reduce CSD's bill by three thirty-nine, five thirty-one, eighty-six and and CSA fifty-three B. About a hundred and eight thousand. Again, that could be those two reductions. And the difference that we make in cost per EDU, you can see on your screen there, about thirty-seven dollars it would cities would go up. CSD, CSD's bill would go down by about twenty-seven bucks and. CSA fifty-three B would go down about eighty-five dollars and thirty-nine cents. And that can be a mess because they have about a thousand EDUs. Okay, so a straight rate, a straight rate would be calculated by multiplying the two annual charges. By the percentage of EDUs. So if you are. Go right into that. I don't know if you recall, but. But the numbers of EDUs we talked about. Do we have it? Oh, it's there, I'm sorry, it's there. So the city is forty-six percent of the EDUs. So the CSD is forty-eight, almost forty-nine and CSA is four point nine five percent of the EDUs. You take those and multiply by the annual requirement. You get, so it's just a straight. Cost per EDU, those are the differences that you see, the city, the city actually would go down by a hundred and twenty-eight thousand. CSD would go up by a hundred and six thousand, fifty-three B would go up by twenty-three thousand. And you can see the respective rates per EDU in the. Costs. But again, that's just based on straight EDUs. The seventy thirty rate would would set fixed and variable portion to seventy percent fixed and thirty percent variable. This would be the respective rate structure for that. City's cost could go up by sixty-six thousand. The CSD's cost would go down by forty, roughly forty-nine thousand, almost fifty thousand. And CSA fifty-three B would go down about ten thousand. And the respective cost per EDU are reflective of. So in summary, the member agencies. Could calculate EDUs differently if they choose. Everybody would have, every agency would have to agree to the same calculation number, right? We're gonna do that and it would have to be adopted by your respective boards. So this all would have to go back, this is a change to the JBA agreement that makes this happen. The member agencies, if they wanted to do sewer meters, they would have to install sewer meters to each of the properties. Again, you know, we know the drawbacks, the I and I and some and low-flow calculations on some of the sewer meters. Water consumption based B is also, you know, a method that could be used. Again, the member agencies would have to do that and report that back and everybody would have to agree to that one. Square footage, fixture count, capacity base and quantity and quality flows. Again, you know, we don't have a recommendation on any of these when currently the methodology that this was raised back. It's two thousand and eleven is the one we're still using, there's been some tweaks to it. But. The only other option that that the board considered that bar accomplished for the board if they chose. Again, it would have to be adopted by the respective boards, we go to flow, straight flow based. We go straight rate for number of EDUs for the seventy thirty split. So those are kind of the options and. I am open for any question before that.
Can I move it back to the board and all this that I'm wanting, Greg Russo, any questions? Back to the board.
Yeah, I'm not sure which one of these would be really good anyway, I think the only. Total accurate way would be to have a meter and and. How much is that though? I don't think everybody's ready to. Put ten, twelve, fifteen thousand dollars per house into it. And there's too many variables, it's like, okay, you can have a four thousand square foot house that a family of four comes up once a year. And and that's like, that's not fair to to charge him just for square footage or whatever. And then some of the guys in our sewer department say that this house is in one bedroom. That they're so packed with people that the toilets are flushing all day long, even though it's only one bathroom, so. It's like, to me, the only way to do it accurately would be to have the the flow on the way out, but there again, the price of that. Would be freaking crazy, so that's that's my comment for right now. I did.
Well, I was thinking about the meters too, and I don't know how much a meter would cost. But, I mean, so. I maybe didn't do it right, but if the meter was four hundred dollars, which is probably more than that. For the city, it would be four point seven million dollars and for the CSD, it would be over five million dollars to do this. So it that that sounds.
And and that's not counting the labor to have the guys have to do it. And then if you have to get somebody to come in and do it, then it's there, once again, it's like, I just had to top off what you said there. So I mean, that, I think the labor would be way more than the cost of the meter.
And don't forget, you know, reading meters, I mean, after you install all the meters are red or. Transfitted, I mean, there's all kinds of different things that keep going on with this, right? So we have meter boxes and installation and, I mean, this is, it's it's a a large price tag. And I'm not sure the benefit pays out, but again, up to the board.
The CSD is going through its. Great study, every time you're sleeping that. The rate study here hasn't been done, as Mr. Lawrence pointed out, since twenty-eleven, twenty-twelve. So it was reasonable to look at this.
Rate study is, who's last rate study? No, no, rate study was done in twenty twenty-three. Good, twenty twenty-three. The actual rate study.
According to your presentation, that it was last updated when in twenty-eleven or twenty-twelve?
That that's the pay, the payment and collection agreement.
But I can think back to when I built my home. That building permit was based on square footage and fixtures. So we do have, at least part of the buildings that we've heard, that kind of information. What you would have missed, of course, people who have been busily bootlegging and. Extravasms. Or even the granny flat. At the back of the building. We now, the state has come in and wants us to, at the very least. Put in a granny flat to help with housing. They prefer three if you can fit them in. And now that you've just burned down twelve thousand homes, obviously, there's an additional burden on our homes, homes supply. So what I'm looking at here was, and I didn't say the difference between a one-bedroom and a six-bedroom, I said one bath and six-bath. Because you can say that, yes, an empty house. Won't have the same impact as the same two-bedroom, two-bath. That's got people living in it. And yes, I know down the street from me, I've got a house that's supposedly two-bedroom. And I swear it's got to be at least three families living in it, from the number of cars and people in it. So what I'm just trying to look at here, and that's why I've been asking over the last two and a half years. Is. Does this reflect the impact on the system? Sometimes we see numbers that say CSD earns the plan more than the city of the girl late, sometimes not. The numbers seem to change back and forth. Yes, I understand there's a difference between EDU rating versus flow. But I look at something like the last hotel that was opened at sixty-two EDUs. Now, does that represent the number of rooms in that hotel? Or is it a computation that came up with sixty-two for a hundred and fifteen rooms?
Yeah, so I I have to defer back to the city to figure out exactly how they did their calculation on the number of rooms typically. Like, let's just say restaurants, it's based on the number of seats. Hotels, I think it's probably, I I I think it's more than. Maybe Sean can fill us in, is there more than sixty-two rooms in that hotel? Yes, please.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence, members of the board. Looking at the city's municipal code, which dictates how EDUs are calculated. For example, on the motel, our code calls for one EDU applied to each three rooms. One for each three, in addition to that hotel, they have a kitchen facility and a meeting facility, so some of those other elements of the development also contribute to leaving the hotel.
Maybe Sean. So that gives you an idea, so obviously, if you take the sixty-two roughly, there's, you know, probably a hundred and eighty rooms or something like that in that in that hotel.
And they're about two and another forty-six?
No, that's a different location, you mean?
For Walgreens? Whatever it's gonna be called there at the triangle?
Yeah, there's another, yeah, there's another facility plan there, is that forty-six rooms?
No, EDUs, no.
Oh, okay, understood.
For that next hotel that's underway, I don't have the exact room count in front of me, but again, the same methodology that's spelled out in our code. Would be how the facility is calculated for the EDU, so the methodology for lodging facilities is the same as dictated, and like I said. If they have a food service or a restaurant that has additional accrual of EDUs, if they don't, then it might be more based on just the straight room calculation.
And before you get away. I understood someone was talking about adding multi-room. Hotel, motel, multi-room apartment. That will wait, now you're saying it's back on the table, do you know if there's been a rejected number on that yet?
We do not have a formal submittal, so I can't speak to number of rooms until we have.
Thank you. But that's. When I look at those kind of numbers and the reports that we get as part of a regular board packet. Then when I see in this about the comparable EDUs between the city and the CSD. I had a loss. To see that those numbers. Considering how many hotel, motels, restaurants, schools are out in the CSD area. Versus the number of businesses, hotel, motel, schools, hospitals, et cetera, in the city. I I look at those numbers with considerable doubt. So what you're saying is those numbers are what the city or the CSD reports to you?
Well, the the number of EDUs is what the city reports to us, yes. And so we all, way back when in the seventies, I think it started, so agreed on the way EDU is calculated. And everybody uses the same methodology, so that way we're all comparing apples to apples. When it comes to the number of EDUs. But it it really comes down to probably more of the flow that comes into the agency from each of the respective agents, other agencies. So that's more reflective of like, you know, you may. I think I think CSD has more EDUs overall than than the city does, but the city has more flow. And that and that probably goes along with what is going on, but it comes down to. The visitor base. That, you know, that's where those numbers come into account. So GSD has a little, about twelve thousand five hundred EDUs. And the city has eleven thousand eight hundred, roughly, you know, she's got numbers. There is a differential between the two, but the city provides more flow with that into the system along. Inside the victory, I, we don't know who has. You know, forward pipes and gives us more I, we don't really know that. But we know that during, and you you were correct, during certain times of the year. The the city does provide more flow and then other times, you know, far as percentage wise, and then during the other times of the year. CSD provides more flow.
And so the. The way you catch up on this. Since the twenty-twelve number would be. As they add EDUs, that's when you get the report, is when it, is this an annual report, seasonal report?
I think, again, I think we get our quarterly, is that right?
No, we get our EDU count as of December thirty-first every year from each agency.
So, and we, but we do get, or we do get usually payments. For the uh capital facility charges, is that on a quarterly basis, or is that just when they come in?
Oh, connection fees we get uh monthly.
Monthly.
Oh, the connection fees we get monthly.
Yeah, because I inside the checks, I see those still through.
Yeah.
But what I'm still looking at would be. You mentioned the difference that D W P supplies water, which are the roads, but C S D handles sewage.
That's right.
And so. When you start talking about flow, is that flow attributed to the city as the D W P? Provider? Or is it billed against C S D as the sewer pipeline?
The the flow that comes into our system is from C S D. It's it's accounted against C S D or towards C S D for the flow itself. D W P, we have no um. You know, we have no records of how much flow goes into the system, we just know, you know, from the meter, we just know that the services, the the water services provided by D W P.
Because I'm also looking at this in terms of. I designed, built my home. It took a year to find a lot I was going to build on. That specifically is because it's passing solar. Well. That neighborhood. That was a nice, quiet, single-family residential, no longer exists. On my street alone, I have five short-term rentals. And when that house that I watched be built. Unless they did some internal modifications, nobody knows about, can't possibly have more than three bedrooms. But they have ten cars are. Making use of that house. And even if there's only one person per car. Uh, I kind of wondered how that could even happen, and one of the neighbors says, oh, well, the. The owner put in bug beds in the garage. Well, that adds a contention for twelve more beds. Hopefully, the county is now on to that. But that's the kind of thing I'm seeing is. What we originally designed neighborhoods for. Such as the five gallon flush, and I asked our sewer guys about this. When we changed to two and a half gallon flush. Did we change the standards of construction so that there's enough fall on the line now to make sure that F one gets to the main? Then we went to one point seven gallon. Well, as far as I can tell, there's been no change in the building code. But in talking to plumbers, I'm hearing that, yeah, there seems to be an uptick in. Blockages, to use a warm-up of their term. And part of that would be people forget if it's a seasonal cabin. All right, unless they really flush the lines out before they left. There can be stuff that's been sitting in the line, turning the concrete, and then they're gonna have a flood when they come out and use it the next time. Well, the same kind of thing that we've applied in some of these houses with. The flow. Is is the main of my street capable of handling five short-term rentals with twenty people in the house? So that's the reason I asked about this, and to be fair, I've been asking for two years, this isn't something I just dreamt up. But I also look at the, when you explained this to me. You said city impacts the system the most in the winter. And typically it flips. To where the summer is C S D.
That's. Far as pretend to flow, that's correct, okay.
So looking back to check these kind of numbers. In the last, from December of twenty three to December twenty four, nine out of the twelve months, the city has ceded the C S D.
Okay, yeah, and there was, and and what year was that?
I'm saying December twenty three to December twenty four. Looking at your figures that were in our report packets, bring tomorrow.
Yeah, and I have actually topped it up, the board's interested, the rest of the board's interested in most, um. I have uh copies of that for the board to to look at if I might see that.
And what I added about Florida, she said, well, it could be that the soil is de-watering too, the charger continues to get. Big numbers. From the city in the summer at ten, so anybody else that's interested.
So, I mean, what's likely happening, and I would, you know, likely happening again is probably I and I, right? Um, and so that's likely the the issue that. That you're seeing uh with those numbers is the I and I impacts the, the I and I from the city impacts the system overall. And so they're providing a lot, they provided more I and I to um. Due our, you know, to our system and itself.
And in talking to our guys about that, I know there was a time when our sewer workers were actually going out with cords. And trying to plug the holes through manholes. Cutters. So that we weren't bleeding into the system. Well, as it was related to me. We weren't getting any credit for that effort, so we stopped.
Well, I mean. I mean, and so you can see where the credit you would get is the fact that you're not putting flow into the system, so you'd be less. It'd be, you'd be less of an impact on our overall system. There there's definitely an I and I problem, I mean, that's it, and that's a step for conversation than our methodology, I would think. But there's an an I and I issue with 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 all three agencies, frankly.
Right.
Right, because we know that, you know. Our system, you know, is supposed to handle four point nine six million gallons per day. And during those flows, we during those high flow. Not just from visitors, but from, you know, weather impacts, you know, we could be getting ten million gallons a day. And two million is still get peeled off over to the the overflow ponds at at Garston. And so, you know, we're trying to process this, and we can tell by the strength of the the flow coming in that. Most of that and the temperature, most of that is I and I. So, yeah, it is an impact that, I mean, the the value of it is for you is that you're processing less, I mean, you're you're sending us less flow, which helps us process it. And frankly, you, um, you know. You know, that's the benefit for you for you guys, and, you know. I I think that's, you know, it's something, another discussion that we're gonna have to have is about I and I and about agencies figuring out. How to deal with some of that, and I know the city's going through a master plan to try and figure out some of that, those issues. Right, they're trying to issue, you know, address that with uh with their master plan. Um, I don't know, Glenn hasn't told me about a uh a master plan in your area or how to deal with some of that. But it's also very expensive to deal with I and I, it's almost more cost-effective to upgrade the plant. To receive higher flow than for you guys to chase. I don't know how many miles of pipeline you guys have, even though, um, but. I know the city has over two hundred miles of pipeline, and to align that, fix all those. It's a very expensive process, and it frankly, it may not even, some of it may not even work, because some of it's coming in. You know, some of it's coming seeping in through groundwater intrusion, some of it is, you know, some of it is just straight from the storm drains. Some of it, people hope they're listening, how their houses up to the uh. To the, you know, sewer lines, I mean, all, there's all, all of the above is happening.
Well, well, Dave, one of the things along with the uh. Whatever you're saying, if we're sitting there putting all those uh cords and stuff in there, and you say, well, you're introducing less. Uh, I I.
Yeah.
Well, you didn't say anything about us paying less for doing that.
Oh, you do.
And how do you figure out how many quarks are in or what?
No, what happens is, since you're you're um sending us, um, you're sending us. Less flow, right, and that, so that variable portion that's in the calculation. There's a variable portion of of the calculation currently in place. That variable uh portion would go down, right, and the cities would go up because they're sending us more. So I think Sean and I, I think he figured out, I didn't do the calculation, but he figured out, he he sent us like fifty million gallons more flow. And it cost him, I think it was like twenty five grand to to send us. You know, fifty million gallons, I think those are the numbers that I got right, roughly, um, so. You know, he ended up paying fifty million, uh, fifty, uh, twenty five thousand dollars more for to send us fifty million gallons. You know, you guys obviously are, you know, spending a little bit less, obviously, the the cost per gallon is small, right? I mean, if you figure that out, right, I, you know, I gotta do math up in public like that again, but, you know, but, you know, it's 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 not much. Per per gallon, so. Does it help you? I think those little, those little pick holes. That they were putting quarks in, I think they can put uh like seven and a half, seven and a half gallons a minute, roughly, something like that. I mean, you know, I mean, I that's, and again, depends on pressure and all those kind of things, but. I mean, we're all scrambling at that point, you know, when we're trying to keep water out of the system, we're all scrambling, I mean. His crew's scrambling, my crew's scrambling, their crew's scrambling, just to try and keep the the amount of flow coming into our system and. Not have, you know. Spills and those kind of things, right, those are, those are, um, so I I'll leave, I mean, Frank. Not Frank, I'm David, but, um, we can't meet our our um permit requirements. When you, when when we're getting that kind of flow from you guys. So, because our permit requires us to reduce B O D by eighty five percent. And there's often times when we're coming up and we're like, well, we're not gonna be able to make that because we have too much. Um, rainwater, you know, when when your normal spring, a B O B string is around two seventy five to three hundred, and it goes down to fifty. I mean. I can't reduce fifty by eighty five percent, it's just physically impossible with that kind, and with ten million gallons gallons coming into our plant, it's just physically impossible.
So. How do we address that at state? Well. Do we get penalized, or do they just average it out over a year and hope for the?
They uh, they don't, typically, we let them know what took what took place. And normally, when that kind of a situation is happening, it's happening all over the state, all over Southern California, anyways, when we get in those kind of rain events. And typically, they're like, yeah, yeah, we understand you can't get down to eighty five percent, it's technically considered a violation, but they we they have. Knock on wood, not ever fined us, but they could technically uh fine us for that kind of a violation, but they haven't yet. They understand that, you know, that I and I happens, and we get a lot of flow um unexpectedly uh from member agencies at that point.
So is it also how, um, you said that the sewer master plan calls for approximately two and a half million gallons a day?
The sewer master plan uh calls for approximately two and a half million gallons a day, um, about. I think it's uh point four million gallons is in the sewer master plan is from I and I, and point seven is. You know, I mean, we can go through the calculations.
You gave us those numbers.
Yeah.
Where where I was headed was. In the last big holiday, you talked about impact on the system.
Yes.
And that's what you said it was, was two and a half million gallons.
Yes.
Well, then if on a heavy. Holiday weekend, it's two and a half. To average out. There's gotta be. Some major shortfall somewhere where we're not having that kind of flow.
Yes, that's correct. So during the summer months. You know, where we don't, and and we don't have, the summer months, and we don't have runoff coming into the system. You know, we're one point four, one point eight, one point four, one point eight million gallons a day. Coming into our system, so we have a lot of days like that, and then we have other days that we, you know, are two and a half million, the over, I think we were, we hit over three and a half. Um, during Christmas and New Year's this year. That whole week.
And so eventually, with the. Flow adjustments. Even though the E D U's may be consistent or growing, then that's how you adjust, is by doing the flow portion.
Yes, that's how, that's how the member agency that sent us the more flow that additional.
Which is measured through.
Our meters.
Meters on mains?
Meters on the mains.
From each of the contributors.
That's correct.
Okay. But you're more confident with the big flow meters like that are more accurate than would be a small, like the household?
Oh, most definitely, because tho- those big flow meters have constant flow. And depth, as opposed to the little flow meters, you flush the toilet once. It goes out to the main, right, and now you're talking about a trickle. And it's, it's a much more, it's much more inaccuracies, but higher.
But that's why I said, that's why I'm. Looking at how. The system has been built. The new impact on the system, because we're no longer. Quiet neighborhoods, you've got. Add the flow. But what happened? About these businesses now that are being run. And what were single-family residential facilities. And so that's what I'm looking at, just, I'm sorry, to me, it seems. Gently apparent that one bath house versus the five five bath house are not going to impact the system the same. So that's why I'm asking. Uh, I don't know how people got the impression that I was out to. Increase your income, raise rates, whatever, my question has been. Is this fair and equitable, what we've been doing?
Oh, and and I totally understand you, I understood your question, I just. You know, in looking at, like, I know you said this has been a little, so we we have been doing a little bit of research on it, it is one of those ones that says. It's, you know, we, there's a lot of factors involved, right, but is it fair and equitable? It's it's a method that we can use, there's other methods that are out there. I I, you know, far as what we can do as an agency, I I gave you, there's a couple different options that the that the board could consider. And then again, the other respective boards would have to consider as well. Um, but I think it's not a, it's not an unfair um. calculation at this at this time, you know, it doesn't, you know, it doesn't always take into consideration. Um, you know, like. Obviously. There's there are things that it can't take into consideration, you know, that that the calculation, because it isn't very. It, you know, the impact of the city sending, you know. Fifty two percent or almost fifty three percent of the flow to our to our agency, as opposed to, um, you know, the forty four percent that the C S D. You know.
Depending on what model.
Yeah, so.
And I have friends that came to me asking about this kind of a system, because they have property in San Francisco. Where the same agents can handle both water and sewer.
Yeah.
And so that's how they do their buildings, is how much water are you using? And if you don't have a yard. That can make sense. But as soon as you add irrigation, all right, your water meter is not necessarily reflecting what's pumped out to the water pipe. I understand that.
Yeah, they have a, there's a standard calculation about fifty percent of the flow, I mean, when you have a.
I was just surprised when they must be doing with two grand. It's like a whole league.
Yeah, so.
So we're, conversation is, the data we have in front of us, we keep talking about the holiday flows, but the holiday flows are not severe flows. I mean, if you look at the total flows, and if you count both or even separately, uh, and let's just say the city's flows. If you look at November, December, January, even starting February, this is for the city, it's much less than. Um, March, April, and May. Those are the big flows, but those are not the big tourist times. So. Uh, I understand exactly what it is, but um during the big tourist times, C S D and the city bigger lake are relatively. You know. C S D's ahead in in latest figures, uh, in um. November. Almost, I'll call it even, pretty close to even December, January, city jumps ahead a little bit. And then suddenly, for those C S D and for the city, February, the numbers start jumping up, and that's. Be an obviously a wetter time, snow melt, March. Um, big numbers again, April, big numbers again. So it's really an I and I issue.
It is.
I think more than what it looks like, easy to say it's a tourist issue, but the numbers don't reflect that. Now, I've got a bunch of other questions, but that that subject keeps coming up, numbers don't reflect that it's a necessarily tourist or hotel. And for that matter, I think you've identified it, that um. And for that matter, I think you've identified it, that um the private home rentals are spread out throughout the entire valley now. It's not concentrated necessarily in the city. And I think that changes things as well. But um, it's the I N I, this, it's always been the problems, both come for both agencies. Um, and we measure the B O B that comes in.
We do.
And do we measure it separately for each agency?
No, we do not.
Okay, well, but you know, maybe that's a, something to look at, look at B O D for each one, each one of the agencies coming in and maybe change that. Um, and I'll just try to, try to, I have a whole set of questions here, but try to, try to finish up so we can
Okay.
Understand where we're going with this, is that that seventy thirty percentage breakout um, and hopefully you agree, Larry, that maybe we should relook at that. Um, and look at really what the fixed costs are and really what the variable costs are, and maybe it's different. Maybe that's a higher number, maybe it's a lower even. Um, but we haven't looked at that, gosh, fifteen years? But I'm saying fifteen years, I don't know exactly how long it's been. It's been a long time since
Yeah.
that agreement was was looked at. So maybe look at those fixed costs uh and those variable costs. And in fact, in terms of the water systems, C S D and I think your, well, I don't need to be key, and I'm pretty sure C S D. They have certain fixed costs to have, excuse me, have water available, whether it's being used or not. And um staying with the sewer system, it's available, it's there. And whether the house is used once a year or it's used constantly every day, those fixed costs still exist in order to have a plant available for somebody to flush their toilet or take a shower or whatever they happen to be doing. Um, but it's available for it. And that seems to be what has worked out previously in the past well, is to use those particular methods to figure out what does the plant cost to have because we have to be ready to go any anytime. No, that's intended, but um all right, but then what is the vari- variable cost? So, um, I hopefully we can reevaluate again at seventy thirty. I'm not sure if it was even arbitrary. I I or if it was based upon science, but maybe we can break it down a little bit more, and maybe there are more variable costs that uh that could be spread out.
We could definitely. It could be that it's still correct. But that's what I'm getting at is in twelve years, have you ever looked at it to see if it's still correct? Because my experience with the C S D would be, we review this every year in order not to impact something. When you have to do a twenty seven percent increase like L A just did for their sewer systems, they're thirty one, I think, with L A. It doesn't hurt to look at it here.
Yes, and and we have no problem looking at those, I mean, note that there you know, some of the items is like twenty five different items, I think, in the, the last time I looked at it. Um, you know, we're talking about, you know, personnel. Um, we're talking about chemicals, talking about power. All the fixed costs that we have to have power, period. We have to have personnel, period. And, you know, all those things. So we have about, it is about twenty five items, if I remember correctly. We can go back and look at those and bring them back to the board for for review to to say, okay, here are the twenty five items underneath this fixed and here are the variable portion of that. I'm happy to to bring that back to the board to to for them to consider. But again, you know, uh, you know, we, we have a good, pretty good understanding of what's in that fixed portion, like, you know, just like fire flow, you have to have the availability to have the pipe you know, diameter, the, you know, flow, the availability to give the flow rate to that, you know, where you need it in the hydrant. You need seven hundred fifty gallons a minute, doesn't really matter. Um, that's what you need at a a hydrant, that's what it's gotta be rated for, so you have to have the availability to deliver that, same fact constantly.
So, Mr. Which one finish up with the questions and we'll, I'll open it up to the general public and then we'll, and then we'll back the quarter of this.
So, um, I don't think it's been discussed before, but are there any um, I'll call them residents, reading businesses that run wells that also use the sewer system? And it's just, it relates back to the water flow issue, uh, if by chance we were to go down that route, uh, we want to measure it by your water bill.
Yeah, I I I know that there is a couple in Fonskin that that uh operates that way. Um, I don't, I don't, there's a couple of wells in this in the city that, but they're not, I don't think it's accounted for that way. So not single family residential, most of them, most of the wells in the city go for irrigation purposes, but the ones in Fonskins, there are a few, but not many. Um.
Probably just a consideration if by chance we go down that route.
I mean, I would say probably under ten.
Okay.
I like that. And then and and those are in Fonskin that I know of. Um, so I don't think it's gonna be a huge.
Got it.
But if, again, if we go down that route, if we seem to agree to go down that route, you probably have to meter those wells uh as well. And so I just didn't seem like it's very likely the way that we'd go. Um, I would like to see is, you know, I think this would help with the city too, uh, quite a bit, figuring out uh more of a the I N I issue. It has been something we've discussed on and off, and I know that Sean and I have talked about it as well. Um, the death flow is absolutely huge. I mean, we go from a total of forty seven thousand, fifty thousand or so, suddenly we're at hundred and five, hundred and seven, hundred and three, like, it's huge.
Huge.
And there's nobody here. I mean, are relatively few people
Yeah.
here compared to the other times of year. So it's not suddenly of inflow of people who are taking showers and flushing their toilets. Really, it's keeping pipes.
Yeah.
Uh, the water's basically intruding into the the pipe system somehow, or like you said, it's illegal connections going into the into the sewer system where people actually using their, uh, call it drainage off their roofs, they're they're then putting it in the sewer system. Something is happening because it's not uh not correct there.
You know, just to mention, you know, um, I approach the city with regard to those overflow ponds because those become critical during those high flow stages and we had no idea what this year was gonna look like. Um, and they jumped right on it and they, um, they dug out some of those sewer ponds and separated some of the stuff uh with us. We dug out some some uh some debris in there too. And so it was, you know, Sean took it real when I said, hey, we gotta, we gotta really take into consideration this. He understands that this is a a real issue for us. And so I, you know, he jumped right on it and had his guys out there building and delivering and um, I commend him on on the effort to to make sure that we have at least available space for any overflow.
Right. So then it gets back to, I think that we should be measuring the uh consistency of what's coming into the plant from each one of the agencies. I think it's just good information to have that we could, uh, if you can't do it, well, we can't do it now. But maybe, maybe we could do it sometime. I would just suggest doing that. It kind of gives, if we give the the city even a more, a better idea, and C S D a better idea of, again, the I N I flow because the the B O Ds got, has to be very high during the holidays.
Yeah.
Right. But very low during the springtime.
Yeah.
And a huge measure, I mean, from what I'm seeing.
Yeah, yeah.
So if we, we had an idea that I would be all in favor of, then I'm definitely there, we're reviewing the fixed costs against the um, uh, fix against the variable costs, make sure that that percentage breakout is correct. And I think that's, or it's a good idea. We should be doing that on an annual basis to make sure that we're still, if you're, I'm all in favor of being as fair as humanly possible with running this plant with each one of the agencies. That's why we have a joint powers agreement. Um, it is to make sure that it's, everything's being handled fairly.
Yeah.
So, that's, that, I'm, we're happy to review those with the board. Um, we'll probably do it during the bud- budget process. Uh, we'll review those fixed and variable during the budget process.
Yeah.
So, um, then in this case, as we was just talking about it, um, I'd like to make a motion that we review those percentages on an annual basis to make sure that we uh have recorded what we'd like to do now and in the future, and also for future boards. So it's uh, it's something that's laid out clearly.
Perfect. Let's, let's, we'll bring that back to the board, um, after we hear one of the comments, if anybody seen more questions, let's, uh, is there anybody others uh wanting to speak on the, or methodology of how to give these stories?
Bring your card up. Yeah, sounds like another government boondoggle. Because there's a lot of variables. I can see why the state of California is doing certain things because they uh wanna get all the prices up as high as possible now that uh it seems like there's jealousy between the gas, electric, they've got all kinds of price increases. I just had a seven hundred dollar electric bill. During the summer, it's uh sometimes thirty, seventy dollars. But they cheer it up, charge extra, and it's B S. And then, so now it looks like uh the gas, they give credits to the people that don't make very much money. Electric gives credits to people that don't make very much money. And now we're gonna have to do the toilets, probably. Because everybody wants a lot of money. Everybody wants all the agencies want new buildings, new things, new trucks, new cars, fire department, two million dollar vehicles. It's like a jealousy between the companies. Thank God we don't pay that lady down there. Would you say seven hundred fifty gallons for uh fire hydrant? She was making seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, and she was an idiot. The whole town burns down, then what? Somebody has the dues are in La Jaina now. One, couple hotels that were saved. I mean, where does this end? Give credit to support people so they can flush their toilet. Isn't that what the uh T and Ts are for? They tax the S T Rs. Hotel rooms, everybody's getting taxed. And then now this, the government wants more money. Take the money from what the the cities are abusing. Don't you guys have ten million dollars in in the bank account? Probably more. As they bear like, how many millions? They keep buying property. They can cut off those properties and rent some. There's still plenty of room for the the trail. You know, this government is making the middle class poor. And I I don't even know how the lower end people are making it between all the crap the government does, bringing in illegal immigrants and giving them money. And we're, the people that live here are just second class citizens now, going down lower and lower. You've gotta be kidding me. There's gotta be limits. It just uh seems like another way to fleece the taxpayers, trying to get more money. And then they're still gonna add on to the property taxes. Last August, they still didn't know what equipment they're gonna use, how much it's gonna cost, when you can do it. We just, oh, we gotta, you know, we got more grants. Why don't you go get a toilet grant? That's how the state can blackmail people. They do all the these stupid requirements. And I hope to God when Trump gets in there, they cut back on the state and say, you let the whole city burn up and doing nothing. So what is the point of this if we can't take care of our forests? I don't see any concern about some things. There's that, there's that many uh S T Rs, um. They're all paying the taxes. Don't they even pay them now in the county area? So what about that? So just keep charging more taxes, more taxes, more taxes until we just give up? Why do you think people are leaving California? Because you got a bunch of idiots out there that approved it by, when they uh did that fifty million to stop Trump and didn't have the respect, didn't have the respect postponing. That's what Democrats do.
Thank you, Seena. Uh, your comments were general public. I'm gonna bring it back to the board. The discussion, motions, your motion stays. You can repeat that for the rest.
What I would like to see is annually that we bring during the budget process the breakout to make sure that the thirty percent for uh variable costs and seventy percent for fixed costs is still an adequate number for being fair to our member agencies.
Any discussion on the motion? All right, Seena, your call, please.
Vice Chair Herr.
Hi.
Director Russo.
Hi.
Director Segovia.
Hi.
Director Walsh.
Hi.
And Chair Miller.
Hi.
It is. The comments in the board. Uh, same as me.